Good morning and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Governmental Operations. If you wish to submit testimony, you may at testimony@council.nyc.gov. At this time, please silence all electronic devices. Thank you for cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good morning. I'm City Council member Sandra Ong, Chair of the Committee on Governmental Operations. I want to welcome Beth Rotman to her first hearing as the new Executive Director of the New York City Campaign Finance Board. At today's hearing, the committee will be conducting oversight of the New York City Campaign Finance Program in the 2021 citywide elections. Ever since the council passed Local Law 8 of 1988, which established the first citywide publicly-financed campaigns, New York City has been a leader in campaign finance reform. When richly enacted, the program provided a dollar-for-dollar match for the first thousand each contribution. This has been amended several times over the years, first to a four-to-one match, then to a six-to-one match, and finally, in 2018, voters approved the most recent change to an eight-to-one match for the first 250 of each contribution. The new matching program was used for the first time in the 2021 city elections. It was extremely popular with 94% of the primary candidates participating in the program. The campaign finance law works to reduce the influence of large, well-heeled donors, amplify the power of individual donors, who generally give smaller amounts. In 2021, individual donors were the primary source of campaign funding. Matching funds participants received over 96% of their funding from individual donations. Even nonparticipants got 86% of their funds from individual contributions. Our public campaign financing program has proved to be so successful that the New York State Public Financing Program, set to take effect in 2024, is largely based on the city's motto of "small donor matching." While current campaign finance program is by most measures extremely successful, we could always do better. Today, we'll hear from the Campaign Finance Board about what impacts the most recent changes in the campaign finance program had on the 2021 elections. In addition, the committee will explore ways in which the city campaign finance laws and rules can be improved. I look forward to discussing these other changes of our panelists. In addition, the committee will be hearing a pre-considered introduction sponsored by Councilmembers Brooks Powers, Farias, and Caban, which require greater transparency around expenditures made in support opposition to municipal ballot reforms or referenda. With that, I want to thank CJ Murray and Erica Cohen from the central staff for their work in putting in this hearing, as well as my own chief of staff, Alexander Hart for assistance. Now, I would turn it over to our moderator, Committee Council CJ Murray, to swear in our first panel.
Thank you, Chair. We'll now hear testimony from the Campaign Finance Board. Before we begin, I will administer the affirmation. Panelists, please raise your right hand. I'll read the affirmation once, and then call on each of you individually to respond. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee, and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Executive Director Beth Rotman?
I do.
Director of Policy and Research, Ali Swadik.
I do.
Thank you. You may begin.
Thank you. Well, thank you, first of all, very much for holding this hearing, Chairwoman Ong, and inviting us to testify today, so we can discuss some of the key findings of the 2021 program and how it worked in the New York City elections. As you know, my name is Beth Rotman, and I'm the new Executive Director of the New York City Campaign Finance Board, and I have tremendous respect for the work of this committee. While I'm new to the role of Executive Director at the Campaign Finance Board, I am not new to the work of empowering and amplifying the voices of everyday working-class Americans who believe that working-class voices should matter most in our democracy. This is what happens when democracy works for all of us, we the people. Before my appointment, I was the National Director of Money, Politics, and Ethics at Common Cause. I also created and led the Small Donor Democracy Program for the state of Connecticut. And because of the small donor program in Connecticut, the state became the first in the country to pass health care for frontline service workers across the state, which undoubtedly saved lives during the pandemic. Small donor democracy programs have real impact on people's lives. So, thank you, first of all, for participating, and thank you for this work on the committee, which partners with us to ensure the program stays strong. As you know, our board's independent, nonpartisan body oversees the small donor program and also engages voters via NYC-Votes. And, as you also mentioned, the Campaign Finance Board has enjoyed a very long arc of progress over our 30-year history, with the recent updates to our flagship Small Donor Democracy Program as a real centerpiece of this arc of progress. And our partnership with this committee has been really central to our progress for New Yorkers. Indeed, when I was last with the New York City Campaign Finance Board as a Deputy General Counsel many years ago, we saw a non-participating mayor, Bloomberg, spend over $100 million to seek office. And at that time, the city's enhanced disclosure requirements did not apply to nonparticipants. It seemed unconscionable that the public would not have meaningful transparency into spending at that level. So, the board worked together with council leadership and this committee to expand the program to include disclosure for nonparticipants, together with other key reforms. And I was the Deputy General Counsel of the Board who drafted those changes, together with this esteemed committee. So, I know the power of this partnership, and am really eager to continue that, because changes like this have kept the program vibrant, relevant, and influential. And we saw this very markedly in 2021. The 2021 elections were unlike anything we've seen in New York City. Term limits created opportunities for a diverse array of hopefuls. Two-thirds of the city's 51 council districts had no incumbents on the ballot. And then the cycle unfortunately kicked into gear with the pandemic still raging in New York City and beyond. And concerns about traditional rhythms of campaigning and in-person fundraising really changed almost everything. The pandemic made in-person fundraising incredibly rare, and accelerated reliance on online tools. And even with all of this, in 2021, we paid approximately $130 million in public funds to over 300 candidates. So, 2021 was groundbreaking for New York City and for the program, with many of the cycle's history-making candidates publicly crediting the program's generosity for empowering their grassroots campaigns. The New York City program fundamentally changes how New Yorkers run for office. The new eight-to-one matching formula was implemented and amplified the voices and small donor donations of nearly 18.3 million small donor contributions from New Yorkers. So, what were some of the key findings? Beyond what I've mentioned already, we had a record-breaking number of first-timers. So, one key mission of the New York City Campaign Finance Board and the program is to reduce barriers to running for office, with special attention paid to women and candidates of color from diverse backgrounds, particularly because the systemic challenges faced by women and non-wealthy or privileged candidates for running for office. So, good news, 2021 saw a record-breaking number of first-time grant recipients, over 77%. That was the largest number of first-time grant recipients in our program's history. Over 77% of the 308 participants were first-time public funds recipients. What that means is that 96% of our sitting city council members participated in the program. And even more extraordinarily, if you can get better than 96%, all 51 members have been program participants at one time. That is extraordinary. Also, with the new legal limits and so many program participants, the overall rates of small contributions to 2021 primary and general elections were greater than all prior elections. 84.6% of all contributions raised by dollar amount were small contributions. That figure was 79% for the general election. And most of these contributions came from New York City residents. While these are extraordinary participation numbers, we are always working to improve the candidate experience. Small donor programs are voluntary programs. Candidates have to elect to join, and then join again, even once they might have some of the protections of incumbency and the better ability to raise big bucks. So, this is one of the reasons candidate experience matters to us, and why we always want to work together to make it better. One of the things we're doing is bringing more innovative tech solutions to the candidate experience, to help your engagement with us and with contributors. So, one part of that is exploring ways to vote the NYC-Votes, I'm sorry, exploring ways to improve the NYC-Votes contribute platform, our credit card processing platform. Another thing we do is examine the trends, including the independent expenditure trends. For the past decade, we've worked to ensure that New York City elections include robust disclosure of independent expenditures, independent spenders fundraising and spending. This enables us to track patterns and ensure the public can follow the money. We note a few big trends in independent spending, including a huge increase in digital advertising, and we also found that very few ads included negative messaging. Now, most of the independent expenditures were related to the mayoral rates, with 77% really focusing on that particular big-city ticket. So, lastly, we always conclude our post-election analysis with some recommendations. Now, you may notice that we didn't recommend a bevy of changes to the city program. That is largely because virtually every piece of the program changed. So, on our end, introspectively, we thought it would be good to have more time to look at the sweeping changes. But we are always open to that conversation on what people think is critical and urgent, and certainly this committee's concerns. And I'll just say that our two main recommendations for changes deal with changes that would need to be made at the state level. And one deals with cryptocurrency, which is something that everybody is talking about and only some people understand. But I will say that cryptocurrency is designed for anonymity in campaign finance disclosure. Laws are quite the opposite. So, we really find no place for cryptocurrency in New York City elections, and recommend a state-level ban on cryptocurrency contributions. And we also recommend that the New York State elections eliminate potential foreign influence on ballot proposals. So, this stems from a finding at the federal level that there were some limitations in actually reaching spending on ballot proposals in the way that foreign influence is more generally banned across the board on influencing elections. So, when the Federal Election Commission ruled that the law doesn't apply to ballot measures, essentially, a lot of people took notice, and appropriately, many states have passed laws to close that loophole. This is also something pending in Congress. It enjoys broad bipartisan support, as well as very strong support from people around the country in some recent polling. So, Americans broadly across all political affiliations agree that foreign individuals, governments, and other entities should not interfere with U.S. ballot measures. So, this is something we are also very much supportive of. And at that, I'll just thank you for this opportunity, and I'm here with Ali Swatek, our Director of Policy and Research. And we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your testimony. I would like to welcome my colleague Lynn Scholman to this committee hearing. Just a couple of questions about the 2021 cycle. CFP paid $127 million in public funds in 2021. Do you have a breakdown to how much was paid to the mayor, to the city council, and to the other citywide elections?
We do, and I'm going to let Ali Swatek go ahead and give back to you.
Thank you. So, we have a breakdown by percentage of, across the board, for the total of $130 million that was paid out over primary and general election. So, of all of those payments, 38% were given to mayoral candidates, 1% to public advocate candidates, and I'll just note that that was kind of an exception to this cycle, because an incumbent was running in that race. The comptroller candidates received 15% of payments, the five borough presidents, another 15. And then lastly, for city council, we saw 31% of payments received by city council members. As Beth mentioned, most of those positions were open races, which means that they're more competitive, more candidates are running. And this is actually what we've seen historically. Most of the time, the amount of payments made to mayoral candidates and city council candidates are pretty close to each other from a percentage basis in years where there's open races. So, that wasn't an unusual occurrence, we would say.
Thank you. So, based on what you just said, do you see the next round of city council elections taking place in 2023, the same amount of payment, or more or less, just based on what you said, because it's not going to be an open seat?
Yeah, so we would expect it to be lower because of the number of incumbents running. There's going to be 51 incumbency candidates. And so, in kind of drawing our projections for how much public funds would be paid, we would expect much less. Citywide candidates, of course, are not on the ballot, and neither are borough presidents, unless there's a surprise special election we don't know about yet. So, we would just be looking at those 51 races for city council.
Thank you. And on the 2021 campaign, do you have a breakdown of how the funds were spent? For example, how much went to print media, how much it went to lobbyists and consultants?
So, one thing I'll say about expenditures is we can do, so I don't currently have that data with me. Fortunately, everything like that is available on our website. We can give you a breakdown as soon as we go back to the office. But I will just note for expenditures, this is what candidates have reported, not necessarily what has been audited. And as you will all experience, as we request greater documentation from campaigns, those categorizations in C-Smart, which is our transparency and disclosure software, do change. So, we don't generally do a deep analysis of expenditures in the report, simply because it's required to be published the next year, before most candidates have even responded to their audit requests for documentation. So, we can certainly give you that breakdown. I don't have it available right now. And just with the caveat, of course, that it's what candidates have originally disclosed to us, not after it's been audited, and candidates have updated some of their records.
No, thank you. Yes, as I know the audit process well right now. Under the current law, to qualify for public matching funds, a candidate must raise a minimum amount of $10 and meet, I believe, 75 in district donors. I'm talking about, obviously, the city council, which I'm most familiar with. Do this board have any positions about that requirement, any thoughts about changing that requirement?
Well, I'll say that, from the board's perspective, the ability to qualify and threshold was certainly one of the things that a lot of thought went into over time. But the ability for candidates to qualify after they show that they're a serious candidate and go around and get that many people to give them small-dollar contributions, as I mentioned, even in pandemic, where they couldn't go next door to their neighbor in the same way, is actually, we believe, a very positive thing. And as long as somebody has indicated and shown that they have the public support to run for office, because I think you can attest that that takes work to go to that many people and get small-dollar contributions. That's a lot of small conversations, big conversations, but with those small contributions really meaning something. So, as long as somebody has shown that threshold level of support, which is part of the law, then I actually think it's great that so many people qualified. So, from the board's perspective, we don't recommend a change in the threshold.
So, was there anyone who had matching funds, who received matching funds, were unable to secure a place on the ballot, because that securing a place on ballot has a different threshold?
Yeah, that's true.
So, actually, contingent upon receiving public funds, you have to be on the ballot, or at least petition and have your name appear. It's actually something that we raised as, the way that our program used to work is payments were made much closer to the primary election. Now that we have early payments, and you actually have to certify to be in our program prior to, and can even receive a payment, prior to petitioning to get onto the ballot, we were actually concerned that that was going to be an issue for more candidates than it was. And I don't have the exact information, but it was a very few number of candidates who encountered that problem. I don't believe that we actually ended up making payments to anyone who didn't make it onto the ballot, and if so, it was one or two, and they didn't keep those funds. That's the important thing, is that that's actually a mechanism that we have for taking back the money, if we do end up paying it in an early payment. But I can definitely follow up with your office about that information.
Thank you. So, in a mayoral primary, there were candidates who received over $1 million in public campaign funds, and were the first choice, only 2% to 3% of the voters. Does CFP track the cost per vote for candidates who receive public funds?
It's definitely something that we can track, but historically, that's not how we've evaluated the success of the program. Because, quite frankly, we're well aware that somebody can have a meaningful campaign, have appropriately qualified to get their message out, and then have learned from the voters that the voters did not believe that they would best represent them. But from our perspective, it's still very meaningful to have candidates who can get the threshold in the program, because really, the alternative is to say, either that we have to evaluate and sort of predict how somebody's going to do, which would be inappropriate, and getting us to sort of a level of evaluation that nobody wants a government agency in, or to say, some people should just spend privately, which I think takes away from many of the benefits that we talk about with having a leadership in the city where almost everybody uses this program. And so, it gives a level of confidence to everyday New Yorkers that the lawmakers representing them are really free from having to deal with wealthy special interests and lobbyists and people who want something from them, for all the hard decisions that you have to make. So, while I do know, and it's the case with every program, that some folks will say, maybe somebody isn't real because they didn't do well, and maybe you shouldn't give public money. The truth is, public financing is the best mechanism for dealing with the huge problem of big money in our elections, and it is working so well in New York City. But we really can't know how somebody's going to do, except for retroactively. And I think those people should still be in the program, because the alternative is hard to support.
I would just add as well that there are several instances of candidates who've run several election cycles before eventually becoming elected. So, I would just highlight one council member who was elected in 2021, Councilmember Narcisse has run in the program several times. And it was, you know, she's been paid public funds before, but this was the first election that she won. And so, we have several examples of that. And I think, just to echo a little bit of what Beth said about not wanting to prejudge candidates and allowing the voters to decide ultimately. The threshold piece for gauging how much support you have in your community, of course, is necessary in order to ascertain whether someone should receive public funds. But it doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to receive someone's vote, and we wouldn't, there would be no way to hold that standard, basically. So, we don't make decisions. Ultimately, the voters are who elects, are elected officials.
Thank you. I do have more questions, but Councilmember Scholman has a couple of questions, so I'm going to let her go.
Thank you. Hi. I got elected in my third try. So, I have a couple of questions. One is, are there specific triggers or red flags that make certain audits a priority for the CFP?
Yes. Yes. I mean, I think that the reality is that we do have internal risk protocols. And I was actually just part of an international anti-corruption conference, where I got to talk about those just a little bit, because they asked me to talk about shadow campaigns and straw donors. And obviously, that is the extreme, extreme, extreme of the risk. We don't see that too often, but it is what the risk protocols are ultimately set up to catch at the worst end. And I'll say that, big picture, we have one team that is looking at things at the individual level. So, they're looking at whether people are meeting the contribution limits, and looking at things more individually, to make sure that reporting matches up with expenditures, et cetera. And there's another part of the process that looks at patterns. And some of the biggest risks comes with patterns. And now, individually, any of the things that you might think of won't matter at an individual level. But if you see too much of it, then it can lead to a visit from somebody on our special compliance team. But that's really the big picture. We have folks that are looking, and as you know, we ask for documentation. And we compare the reporting and the documentation, and we're also looking for patterns.
And you do an audit of every campaign, is that correct?
Yes.
So, I have a question. Is there ever any thought given to doing spot audits of campaigns that throughout the cycle did very well and didn't have any issues versus ones that didn't? In other words, I know it costs money to do an audit of every campaign, but some campaigns, like if a campaign along the way has a lot of issues that came up during the campaign, I could see you doing a full audit of them, whereas maybe look at sort of where there's, you know, do spot audits of the other, just in terms of saving money, and also the stress of people that actually went out of their way to comply.
Well, we are always looking for ways to make the process less stressful. And I'm very happy to work with this committee and with you on that. Absolutely. I will say that we do generally feel that we don't have a full picture until we get some level of post-election documentation from everybody. But we are always looking for ways to make the process quicker, more candidate-friendly.
Right.
And focusing on what we really care about, which is the risk to the public fisc. So, yes, we've thought about everything, and we continue to do that, and we're happy to work with you on that. I mean, one of the things that we're doing, and we're doing this through innovation, and we're at the start of this process, and not the complete start, but we have a lot to go, is trying to see how much we can do more quickly via technology, also so that if we ask you any questions, you're going to get that question much closer to the campaign, and then maybe we can, you know, write that off as all set, instead of asking people much later, which is what we've had to do by making it so manual and so people-focused. Although, we always need our people, and we love our people. We're not trying to replace people with machines, but we are trying to use machines to help us accelerate and innovate, so that the process is more candidate-friendly and involves less stress, and certainly, less stress after the process.
No, that's great. So, I have a totally separate question, which is, I understand that people that do business with the city and lobbyists and all that are limited to whatever, for council members, it's $250. My concern is that those people also, even though they live in my district, can't be counted for the in-district contribution. And they're living there and participating in the community like everybody else. So, I was going to ask you if any thought could be given to just letting that occur.
We can definitely talk about it. I'll tell you that on those same folks, you'll hear people who want to go the opposite. So, we are sort of put in the middle on that at times. There are often people who say, you know, why can they take that money at all? There are often people who say, you know, why can they take that money at all? So we are sometimes in the center of that, but we can definitely give thought to that.
Because as an example, there are some people in my district, they're lobbyists, but they're on the community board and they participate in the community, they're on the precinct councils, and then they and their spouse and their immediate family can't be counted as somebody who can be counted for the in-district. I'm not asking for matching, I'm not asking for any of that or the raise a limitation or anything else, but just in terms of, because some people have come to me and say, you know, I don't feel like I'm a full participant in the elect, in the election process. So that's all, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Scholman. I'd also like to welcome Councilmember Jaeger to this committee hearing. And do you have any questions?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you very much. Good morning and welcome to Campaign Finance Board. Congratulations. The 2021 elections were held 13 months ago. The primary for those elections were held five months prior there, too. To date, not a single audit has posted on the Campaign Finance Board's website. What's happening?
Well, you're saying we haven't posted the audits from this past election?
2021 final audits, to my knowledge, not a single one has been completed.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I think that it is a process that we are working very hard to accelerate. We are going to be using innovation to try to make things more contemporaneous with the elections. It's part of a big strategic plan that we've just worked through to try to make it more possible to start sooner so that any part of the election, sorry, that any part of the audit is starting sooner and can finish sooner. But there's no question that we do have some backlog and that we are still finishing up the audits from the last cycle. We are also, we've also asked for additional positions. We'll be getting additional auditors to be able to move faster, but I think that also innovation is going to be our friend here to be able to accelerate this. We are working on it.
Okay. Over the last several cycles, the, the CFP has changed the processes for how documentation is submitted post-election. Instead of having it submitted post-election, it's being done contemporaneously with filings. So for example, bank statements, instead of having them all submitted in one lump sum at the end of the campaign where the CFP has to start from a zero balance and work its way through 24 months, 36 months of bank statements, they're getting them over either a six-month period or two-month period, depending on the filing. And it gives the CFP an opportunity to audit, as broadly as that term may be used, or at least do a bank reconciliation, frequently wrong, notwithstanding still over the time that the statement is submitted, instead of waiting post-election. So by the time the post-election happens, the bank reconciliation's been done and really there's nothing left to do. And so for example, in a campaign that didn't take public funds, I happen to know of some campaigns like that, that spent maybe, you know, 8% or 10% of what it raised, a very small amount. And we're about to start circulating petitions in three months for a new cycle with many of the same candidates not having closure on their previous cycle. I'd also, I'll acknowledge the nods, so you know what I'm talking about. That wasn't a question, I guess, but you got what I'm saying. Not all the candidates in the 2019 special elections and the general election cycle have had their audits completed as well. I'm not asking you to give any information that's proprietary or, but, but I would just note that there are people who ran in 2019 who are currently in office who also don't have their audits done. So again, you know, the CFP did accelerate the reviews and make things a little easier to be able to be, to get to the point where it's post-election and there's less to do. But I'm just, you know, if you came in and you said, well, you know, we've done 20% of the audits, 15%, 8%, 1%, but it seems at least as far as the public can see, 0% of the audits have been concluded.
Well, you're right. And we are working on innovating so that we can do better. I will tell you that my, our, our new Director of Tech and Innovation told me at one point a few weeks ago that we should be careful what we wish for because he's worried that if we really do all of the ambitious goals that we've set, if we achieve the ambitious goals we've set for ourselves vis-à-vis accelerating the use of innovation and technology, should we worry about whether, you know, we'll have enough to do or something like that, or whether we'll, you know, have enough work for everybody involved?
I'm really, I'm really not concerned with that.
And I said-
The CFP has always found another thing to do, notwithstanding its mission.
Well, I, I was going to say that along the lines of what you're saying, asking for more contemporaneous audits, which is the goal, so that people can actually have these reviews, I mean, not everybody wants to have this happen while they're in a contested election, so we have to be mindful of that. We can't really be asking people to do things in an audit while they're running for office, but we can certainly do it sooner. And that is part of why we're digging deep with the innovation to do better.
All right. I, I see a clock and have been paying attention to it, but I appreciate the Chair letting me, letting me in her room today. You know, I would just say the following, an audit of a campaign takes a day. If somebody tells you that it takes more than a day, they're lying to you. Auditing the finances of a campaign takes one day. Could it take two? Sure. Three max. But it doesn't take 18 months. It just doesn't. And, you know, the, just to follow up on, on Councilmember Scholman's question about whether or not there could be better ways and better spot checks. For example, I don't want to drill deep down into the technical parts of it, although I think we may have already crossed that bridge, but I don't think the CFP needs to bother asking every single candidate for every single deposit slip, for every single deposit made, if everything else looks okay. Auditors know. It smells right, it smells right, move on. And, you know, forcing the, the, the situation where you have audits that are lasting two years perpetuates the necessity for the CFP to have as many staff as it says it has. In other words, to, I guess, to go back to what you said, if you got them all done quicker, people would start asking, what is it that you folks do all day? So, you know, as we would say in Brooklyn, it seems that maybe they're schlepping it out a little bit, just to schlepe it out a little bit. And I'm, I'm not just speaking with the experience of one year behind me. I, I know a little bit about this and I, I really do think that the auditors are not moving as fast as they can. And I'm sure that some of these questions will mean that I'm going to get the kind of audit that will, that will drown me in paperwork, but notwithstanding, I think that these are important things to talk about because I, I think that there are candidates, not just incumbents who are here, who want to begin getting ready for the next campaign, but all across the city. I mean, the whole idea is, right, we want to, opened it up, we've let, paying people early, you know, without regard to ballot access, something that I opposed in this council, I think it was a mistake to do that. I'm glad to hear your testimony that, that it hasn't resulted in people getting paid without attaining ballot access to a great level. I'm not sure what the number is, but that's an important distinction because assuring ballot access before releasing public funds was a very important prophylactic to make sure that the public funds don't get wasted. But I do think that, that the closure of the last cycle, the closure of the 2019 cycle, I think I did hear that the final audits of the 2017 cycle are all done. I don't know if I'm overstating that. I saw a nod. Is that a yes? Okay, yeah, all right. So that's good, but I think that there has to be some closure and it has to be a little faster. And I think that there are ways to do it that don't involve every single paper for innocuous campaigns that, that really didn't spend a lot and certainly those that didn't spend public funds to sit and wait for a year, for two, for three to get it done.
We will not be giving you any harder of an audit. Do not worry. And I, I take your comments in the well-meaning spirit for our improvement and assure you that we are dedicated to moving this process to a place that is more candidate-friendly and faster.
And, and keeping an eye on the public funds is always the most important.
Well, with that being the key, I mean, I've already, in the innovation process, the thing that we're starting with is I start with the key questions because I had the privilege of building a program from scratch in Connecticut. So when you don't have anything, you get into kind of startup mentality and you say, what do we have to build first and what you build first? But now we're really rebuilding and going to a whole new place and replacing systems that were old. So we talk in terms of how do we ensure protection of the public fisc? How do we make sure that, and that's where you start? How do you make sure that only the right people are paid, the payment processes? And how do you ensure that, that you, sitting there, or any of us, can say that the public money used by candidates using the Campaign Finance Program in New York City goes to pay for lawful campaign purposes? And if it doesn't, it's going to be caught by the Oversight Agency doing their job and evaluating risk and finding these problems and not doing something horrible, which would be breeding cynicism in our elections.
I'm going to turn it back to, to the Chair. I've long passed my time and her patience, but I, I will just say that the final piece that you said is the evaluating the risk part, I think is an important piece to instill within the auditors that when they look at campaigns, it ought to be about evaluating risk, the protection of the public fisc being the, the most important thing, obviously ensuring that nobody is cheating and taking funds that they're not allowed to, being, being up there on the list. But at the end, it's about evaluating the risk, the benefit to the taxpayers. And, you know, I, I think that campaigns that, that, that haven't provided or haven't shown or demonstrated a risk to the task, to the taxpayers, either in taking taxpayer money or in violating the law, it ought to be moved on to the point quicker. I'm not going to belabor this point anymore because I think we both get it, but I do really very much thank you for your commitment. Thank you for being here and I thank the Chair very much for your indulgence. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jaeger. We've also been joined by Councilmember Ressler and Hanif. I believe Councilmember Ressler has some questions.
Thank you. Firstly, let me congratulate you, Ms. Rotman, on your appointment. It's what, two months now?
Yes.
Okay. Well, welcome back to the CFP.
Thank you.
Good to have a former CFP here leading the agency. And I'm a big fan of the lady to your left, so it's good to see you again, Ally. Thank you guys for being here today and thank you Chair Ung for holding this hearing. I know that my colleague from Borough Park is a strong cup of coffee, but he has more compliance experience than just about anyone I know and he's very bright and has a lot of great insights on these issues and others. So appreciate, agree with, with many of the sentiments that he raised. I, I wanted to particularly ask, you know, I'll just say briefly, our campaign finance system is a model for the country and it is a tremendous success. I am incredibly proud of, that we have this system here in New York City and in my humble opinion, every municipality and state should emulate the great work that has happened in no small part to the CFP's, CFP's team and leadership. We are continuing to ever refine the system and I think that it's important for us to look back on the changes that were made in the 21 cycle, which I think were made with the best of intentions and ask ourselves what's worked well, where could we continue to refine and improve? It's important for us in government to always be willing to say we did something right or we didn't get it exactly right and we need to modify course. I'm particularly focused on the in-district contributions. And it's a very, in my opinion, it's a modest threshold for in-district contributions. I think, and I wonder, you know, how much you've looked at the data as it relates to in-district contributions. I just want to firstly ask, has the CFP taken any position on the threshold of in-district contributions and whether it should be revisited?
Oh, I can tell you that we look at that because that's always a key part of the program. But while I think that there were some concerns raised by people around whether too many people qualified for funding or whether the fact that so many people qualifying for funding meant that we should look at the thresholds, from the board's perspective, we did not find that. We thought that, and I still think, that this is what democracy should look like with so many open seats. So while we did give a lot, I'm not sure that's what, if you're what we're asking.
No, to be clear, I, I want to, I just, to share my perspective on that point. The, I, I believe that the matching system and that we have in place is a primary reason that we have as diverse a council as we do. The first, you know, South Asian representatives, the first Korean representatives, we've reached major milestones in reflecting the diversity of New York City in this first majority female council, in no small part due to the generosity of our matching fund system that, that empowers everyday New Yorkers instead of wealthy corporate and special interests. That being said, 75 in-district contributions, my district has over 220,000 people living in it, 75 in-district contributions to demonstrate local support, or 100 in-district contributions for somebody running for borough president are very modest thresholds. And, you know, I am fully supportive of the campaign finance system. I, I hope you hear that in my questions and my comments, but I wondered if you've considered revisiting that threshold and if it's something that we should be reconsidering as a council.
So something that I would just mention is, in addition to the number of folks who were paid in this election cycle, there were a remarkable number of whom, I think it was almost 90% who were paid for the first time ever, meaning that they had not previously run in a cycle before, or if they had, they had not reached the threshold to be paid. So that's something that we take a look at pretty closely. The changes that were made in 2021 were vast. No aspect of the program was untouched by the 2018 Charter Revision Commission, which, if I recall, Councilmember, you worked on.
I did, I did. So you can blame me for some of the things you don't like.
We did not, we did not change the threshold, but the matching rate was changed, the percentage of public funds as, as it relates to the spending limit was increased drastically from 55% to 89%, further changed by a city council legislation later down the road. So with that in mind, we are definitely planning to look at how threshold has been, we think, impacted by the fact that the program expanded so greatly. In the past, we've also heard recommendations from folks, including good government groups who you may hear from today, that we should lower the threshold for folks to qualify for public funds. So this is perhaps maybe the first election cycle where we've, and you're not the only one, absolutely, it's something that we've also asked ourselves, whether the threshold amount should be higher. So that's something that we're continuing to look at. It's worth mentioning that 2021 was the first election cycle with this massive expansion of the program. We didn't want to, and, and it was just already a very unique election cycle. We had ranked choice voting for the first time, we had the pandemic, we had civil rights protests that got many more people involved in the electoral process as candidates that maybe wouldn't have normally been involved. So all of those societal conditions and just the program changes that took place, we didn't want to make a, a decision based on a single election cycle. So for something like threshold, we want to be able to have several election cycles of data to see how those changes to the program impacted candidates.
Could you elaborate on what data points you're looking at to inform that analysis?
Yes.
What candidates, like what are you looking at? The percent of our, of contributions that are in-district donations, you know, and if you could elaborate further?
Yeah, absolutely. So you know, we've mentioned the threshold is 75 contributors that are in-district for city council. Something that we would look at is how, how many of those candidates who are running didn't meet the threshold versus how many who did? And if that's consistent to previous election cycles or if there's a trend that we're seeing from the changes that took place in 2021, as well as the fact that there are candidates who've received more than the threshold of contributions. So if we took a look at the number of candidates who'd received over the amount of threshold, probably the folks in this room who ended up winning their elections as well would qualify under those definitions. But the question of how far above threshold did folks fundraise, I think is something that we will continue tracking. Again, 2021 was pretty unique. We also had just, folks were fundraising predominantly online, they weren't fundraising in person. Those are all changes that impact the way that candidates receive funds. And again, we'll continue tracking them into 2025, which is probably the election cycle that will give us the insight that we need.
I'd just say, I think it's a good thing for as much of the contributions to come from public matching funds as possible, for us to limit the influences of special interests and wealthy folks, reducing maximum contributions are something that I am supportive of. But demonstrating breadth of support in one's district is an important thing. And I don't think it's an unreasonable thing to have more than, a greater number of people provide $10 contributions to demonstrate you have support in your community when receiving public dollars. And, you know, I, there are trade-offs that could- And, uh, you know, I, there are trade-offs that could match, that could go with such a policy change, but I, I hope that it's considered. And I apologize for taking so much time. Chair Ung, I will shut up. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So, um, actually, I'm going to, um, concur with my colleague, uh, Councilmember Ressler regarding his concerns, which I asked you originally at the beginning of this hearing. I'd like to go back to audits a little bit. So, um, I think we all agree, um, it would be good to do the audits quicker. And I appreciate your efforts to find ways to do it quicker. But, um, since it's been taking a while, are there specific triggers or flags that would make CFB, you know, have a, like, that would be, create a priority for CFB regarding certain campaigns?
Well, as I mentioned, um, we look at patterns in addition to just looking at, um, each individual contribution. So without sort of, and we do have a pretty elaborate set of risk protocols. Um, but we're also, of course, working very hard to treat everybody fairly and equally. So it really starts after the election when we're asking for a really comprehensive review. But yes, we are looking for patterns and, um, one of the things that we can't do now that we used to be able to do were compliance visits. Um, and that actually helped accelerate quite a bit. We haven't been able to do those and that's because of the risk of the pandemic and that is something that helped, um, with the risk evaluation. But, you know, a-again, I, I really do appreciate the focus on speed and it is absolutely something that I'm prioritizing. But I think that the reality is nobody would also, would support having an agency that had enough people to sort of get this many candidates. We've never seen this many candidates. And have the number of resources it would take to sort of make it that contemporaneous with so many people is something that, you know, that nobody would tolerate. So I'm sorry, I don't want that to be a non-answer, but it really is something that we are going to work on. But it's always going to take some time to ensure protection of the public risk.
I appreciate that. Is there, um, can you share what are those risk factors that would, uh, be a trigger in, in prioritizing certain audits over others? If that's what you were saying originally? I'm sorry, I might be misinterpreting what you were, your response.
Well, I mean, we're auditing everybody. So it's not that there are certain things about certain campaigns that make you look at somebody and not somebody else. I'm saying once we're looking at documentations, if somebody, if somebody sees problematic patterns, then it's why a campaign might get additional questions. Because we have people that know, special, a special compliance team that knows how to look at patterns.
So I guess I'm asking a different question. Are certain, is there priorities regarding auditing certain campaigns over others? Or you're telling me there is no priority? It's just a random, it's random how you prioritize auditing certain campaigns?
Oh, I'm sorry. Right, no, we're not prioritizing some campaigns over others. We are just, um, we don't look at everything, right? I mean, that would be crazy. Um, we don't look at everything. So that's all I mean. I mean, the way to make it possible to have so many campaigns and to say that, you don't want to miss the campaign that could have been the one that's a problem. And quite frankly, it's not always obvious from somebody's disclosure if their documentation is going to be a mess. So because we look at everybody and because we need some perspective after the election to compare what's reported to the documentation, then we have, what I meant, really extensive risk protocols so that we're not looking at everything.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm going to switch the question to, um, the spending cap. Um, I think we all know there's inflation. Uh, what, um, and if everything costs now, including paid canvassers, uh, printed materials, has all gone up? Has there been thoughts about increasing the spending cap?
I think it's always something we have to look at. I think there are small donor democracy programs around, around the country that people are anticipating that don't even have spending caps if everybody is raising only small dollars. I'm not saying that that is something the board has taken a position to go for yet. I'm just saying from my national perspective, um, there are very respected, good government groups saying that programs don't even need spending caps if the only money is small dollar contributions that you're raising and, um, and the public funds. So, I mean, spending caps serve other purposes. So, um, and like I said, the board hasn't taken a position to eliminate it, but it's definitely something that we always have to look at because you're right, things get more expensive.
Thank you. We've also been joined by Councilmember Brewer and I believe Councilmember Hanif has some questions.
Thank you so much, Chair Ung, for holding this important hearing today. And it's really great to meet you both and, uh, listen in on this conversation. Apologies for coming in a little late. Um, and I also want to thank Councilmember, uh, Brooks Powers for bringing forward the pre-considered introduction being heard today. I'm proud to just have signed on as a sponsor. Um, I want to build on, um, the conversation that Councilmember Ressler, uh, was having earlier. I think he's, he's gone now. But want to just affirm my support first for the public matching system and just how valuable of a program it was for a first-time candidate like myself, not having any experience, having worked on any prior campaigns. And actually, the 75 in-district threshold, um, was a daunting one because I did not come from, uh, any political connections. And although I was organizing in my neighborhood, the electoral process was not a familiar one. And so 75 was a lot of people, is still a lot of people. And so I would actually be in favor of lowering that threshold to really, um, uh, standardize the playing field even more. And of course, the matching funds program allowed me in tandem with 75, although that, that's still, that, I still consider that a high number. Um, but through conversations and really thoughtful ways of really getting folks to think beyond our organizing model in neighborhood to how do we bring this good work that we're doing into City Hall? And the, the low-dollar contributions made a difference. But I'd be in favor of, um, a, a lower threshold to make it even easier for a candidate like me and others, a much younger candidate than we've seen in the past. Um, myself and Councilmember Shaker Christian, a first-ever South Asians elected to the body. I'm the first Muslim woman. Um, and in my district, it was a very crowded race and it was the first time in many, many years that we were able to elect someone not from Park Slope. Um, so very critical, uh, reforms made that happen. And I really talk about this when I, um, discuss how I got here. And so just want to share that support. And also, um, want to understand some of the other barriers that, uh, you've observed, um, uh, that contribute to, to why candidates may not run or what makes it difficult for candidates in the process of their run and campaign harder to meet certain thresholds and goals during their campaign?
Well, I appreciate that and thank you very much. And I think it's, it's, uh, super helpful to have that perspective and that, uh, that background. Thank you. Um, I have seen that also when I was, in my role as the founding director of the Connecticut Program, that sometimes the thresholds that some folks think are very manageable, uh, even for established candidates, um, can sometimes feel, when it's so many sort of small conversations, so many small dollars that you have to raise, uh, it can feel daunting. So I appreciate that viewpoint and I do understand that, uh, those numbers hit different people very differently. And particularly in the health crisis that we had. Uh, you know, years ago, when I was founding the Connecticut Program, we could tell people to have a spaghetti dinner and it started to make sense. And there were a whole lot of spaghetti dinners and you couldn't do that this time. And that's really tough. But, so I thank you for that. Um, I think that one of the things, and, and I'll let Ally speak to this a little bit specifically to, if she knows, some additional details. But I'll tell you that one of the things, um, from my perspective of working in New York City, but also other places, is that, as you mentioned, for people who are new to the system, you know, it's, it's all new and it all seems hard. And it might seem very, very important and we want people to run, as we had here, uh, that aren't just political insiders and that don't sort of know how it's all going to work because you want people to be part of democracy that come from all different backgrounds. But one of the things that I think can be extremely daunting is that somebody who is new to running is also new to the whole idea of what a campaign means. And I think you all know, uh, even if you've not been in office, for some of you that are new so long, that it can be one thing to want to serve the public from the perspective of serving and another thing to sort of know how to get there. And those aren't always the same skills. And I'll tell you that even when I was working with folks that had been in office for many, many years in Connecticut, when the sea changed and folks were, um, going to start using public financing programs, the amount of palpable fear at people who were very, very impressive and important and distinguished. But the idea that, now it was a full matching fund program, so they need, did need to read, raise a bit more than 75, but not a lot. And then they got a huge grant. And I will tell you that candidate after candidate told me they couldn't do it. They did it. They did it. But they were sure they couldn't. And so it's a real thing. Um, and I, and I will say that there are people that can't do it. Um, and that is because they haven't figured it out. But that's also what came up earlier when, uh, Ally was talking with, uh, one of the other council members. Sometimes it takes a few times. And we do see people who can't raise threshold one year and they come back. Or they can't get elected and they come back.
And does the CFB provide any resources or tools to, uh, really encourage candidates to be able to reach the 75 in-district threshold?
You know, it's something that we don't do, but it is something that I was part of at Common Cause and it's something that I can see us connecting to in a obviously nonpartisan way. Um, I think there are organizations that do this, probably in more wearing partisan hats. But it is actually something, at least connecting people via our website or knowing, ensuring that people know what the resources are, um, to be able to run. I think that is something that we, that I could see us connecting to. And it is something that I was part of at Common Cause in a nonpartisan way, but making sure that people knew where there were resources to help them be able to run for office.
And then is there a data breakdown of candidates who, at their first time, didn't meet the threshold, but at their second time did? Is there a sort of analysis that you all have around how many candidates per election cycle were able to meet thresholds?
It's not something I personally know now, but we probably have a data analysis for just about everything. So I could probably turn to Ally and say that she could get that for you.
Okay, that'd be great to see.
Yeah, I love that question. So there's a
I know you would, of course.
Um, there's a whole section of the report, um, that focuses on first-time payees. So those are the folks who we're defining as, um, not to specifically use you both as an example, but Councilmember Hanif, you would be a first-time payee. And Councilmember Brewer, who's run in the past, would be what we refer to
A hundred times.
As a program veteran.
And I still hate it.
And we mean that very, very respectfully because we love both of you equally. But, um, the determination that that, so basically the, the analysis that we did had a very boring conclusion, but it's my absolute favorite thing that we've probably ever done. Um, because it basically said that the experience of someone who is being paid for the first time and someone who is being paid as a veteran, um, was basically the same. So we want to see that, right? You'd want to see that the average contribution that they're raising is very close, which we found. Um, that the total number of contributions they were raising are close. That's also something we found, um, as well as the amount of public funds that, um, folks were receiving. So those things were equal. And while that's a boring conclusion for someone who is a social scientist, that's exactly how we'd want the program to be operating. It's not treating anyone differently. Um, but at the same time, it's kind of allowing folks to perform in the same way, eh, for lack of a better term. Um, a few things that we do as an agency to, um, assist candidates who are running for the first time. I'm sure you're all aware of your Candidate Services Liaison, um, as well as your auditor. I have seen auditors manually hand count in-district residents to make sure that, um, folks are reaching that 75 number. And there are certainly people who make it exactly to 75. And in that case, you are reaching threshold. And so, um, in certain cases, there are folks who make, their first public funds payment is them literally having 75 in-district residents, um, which of course is the testament to the fantastic work that our audit team does, as well as our Candidate Services Unit in, um, educating candidates who are running for the first time about the compliance aspects of the program and how they can follow the rules in order to make sure that they can eventually qualify for a public funds payment. Um, and then lastly, another section of the report, which I also love, um, talks about our NYC Votes Contribute Platform, which is something that we heard from candidates was, um, a dire need. And this was something that we created, uh, originally back in 2013, but really became, um, more adopted in 2017 and 2021. Um, 90% of candidates used our NYC Votes Contribute Platform. Um, it's a credit card processing platform that we offer for free. Um, it also allows candidates to stay in compliance. So you're collecting all of the information that you need at the outset because our program is, the contribute platform is hardwired to receive that information. So those are a few things that we do to, uh, help improve the experience for first-time candidates and also make sure that folks who, basically you don't need to have raised lots and lots of private dollars to pay for something like, um, NGP or a more complicated fundraising platform. We actually provide a credit card processing platform for you. Um, and that is unique to the New York City program as far as we are aware. Um, and then, because I've been answering this question for what feels like 10 minutes, the last thing I'll say is, um, Councilmember Hanif, you asked about, um, demographic, uh, statistics, things that may be, um, contributing to other barriers of entry for folks who are running in the program. This is something that we've identified as really important for looking at over the course of the next two cycles in 2023 and 2025. Um, by collecting demographic data from the candidates themselves, we'll be able to do, um, analyses to see if there's anything that's like out of the ordinary for candidates who don't meet threshold or candidates who do. Um, and just different qualities that, um, those candidates, uh, express. And I'm not just speaking about, um, traditional, like razor socioeconomic questions, but also geographically, do we see disparities in, in the Bronx or in Brooklyn compared to Queens? And, um, or folks who, uh, are people with disabilities who have obviously different issues that they may need to contend with while they're running for office? If we ask those questions, we can do that analysis and that's something that we're planning on doing, um, starting for 2023.
That's really great to know. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanif. And I believe Councilmember Brewer has some questions.
Thank you very much. I could, I don't even know how many times I've run, but oh my God, it's a nightmare every time. But your staff is very nice. I'm okay with the 75 in, in, you know, Manhattan or my district. But, um, the question I have is, I know you mentioned, just in terms of other suggestions, I know I agree with you on the foreign and the crypto, but do you use things like Apple Pay and Vermo and other ways of collecting funding? Is that something that's already part of the collection process? Or is it checks, credit cards, and then cash? Only sometimes, I'm aware of the cash problem. Like, are there any other methods besides credit card checks for collecting money? Because people are using others now.
I don't think so. We don't think we allow them, Venmo, those things.
When I go to a fundraiser for a nonprofit, which I do every friggin' night, there is, uh, people are using Apple to pay for their ticket, they're using Vermo, they're using, I don't know what else. Those are the two that I at least know what they are and use. So can we use those for your program? By the way, your staff is great. By the way, your staff is great, I just want to let you know.
They are great, thank you.
They put up with me. I do not understand half the stuff that is going on, so go ahead. And that god-awful, I love the thing that you, you know, your platform, but you could update the website a little bit and some of the questions that make me insane. Go ahead. I have nightmares about the whole thing, just to be honest with you.
About running, even though you've done it, tell me, the nightmares? What are the--
Everything. It's just those pieces of paper and the receipts and all that. I understand it's public money, I got it.
I see.
But you know, I can deal with the 75 because I know everybody. But the issue of the, it's a hard website.
So the one thing that I would say--
But other ways of collecting money besides checks and credit cards, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, so what I would say about Venmo and PayPal are that the necessary questions that we require candidates to ask are not necessarily--
On Vermo or Apple?
Yeah, we know how to use Venmo, you know, you scan a code or you find someone's phone number and send money to it. But you're not asked for your employment information, which is required, of course, if you--
But it's something that might be able to be figured in, because it would be easier to raise money, because, I mean, I'm, you know, I talk about these young people, but old people know how to use them also.
Yeah.
And so, but they're quicker and they're faster, and I don't even know anybody who doesn't use them sometimes these days.
So I will tell you that one of the issues that came up along these lines, it's not specifically Venmo or PayPal, but the ActBlue question--
Correct.
Because they did not require or provide the backup documentation originally. And I will tell you, I wanted to jump in and say that, because when a vendor is willing to work with the New York City Campaign Finance Board and do that, then it makes it possible. Not all vendors are willing to do that. ActBlue was willing, they're just one example, there might have been others.
No, ActBlue is, yeah.
So after a process that I know was, and I know about this because I had checked in with the New York City Campaign Finance Board when somebody asked about bringing them into a different state. So if the vendor is able to work with the board about the appropriate backup documentation, then yes, but they have not, that is not something--
Well, I guess what I'm saying is maybe you could reach out to them and say, would you be willing to work with us? I don't know if that's appropriate, but I think what I'm trying to say is, people have other ways of paying, it's hard enough to get money out of them, and if there was some way of, I'm the only person who writes a check in the United States of America right now, to the best of my knowledge. But, so people are, you know, I'm just saying, suggestion.
Okay, we'll--
Trying to think of other ways to get people to part with their money.
Something that we've discussed internally as well, through the NYC Votes Contribute Platform--
Which is a great platform, that's--
You can type in your credit card number, but we've all seen in checkout where you can click the PayPal button or the Apple Pay button. And if we're collecting the compliance information through the NYC Votes Contribute Platform, but giving folks the opportunity to click through those different ways of paying, but still using the platform, again, that's something that we would need to design and have technology support for, through our vendor who runs that system, but it's something that we've spoken about internally for sure. So thank you, Councilmember Brewer, for bringing it up.
It would help all of us.
Sure.
And then, was there anything else that came out of the hearings, which of course I didn't get to, that were suggestions for improvements? Were there a lot of, I think you had a hearing? And were the other suggestions about improvements?
Yeah, we had a post-election hearing--
You did.
That took place immediately after the election. We took in information from the public. We did not have as many suggestions in that post-election hearing than I think we have in the past.
Well, that's a good thing.
I was--
That's a good thing, or they're like--
Yeah.
I can't deal with them, so I don't want to deal with them.
I was joking, we've innovated past the point of recommendations, but honestly, I think it's just that folks recognized as well that the program has changed so many, in so many ways in 2021. And it was kind of like, let's see how this works going forward.
But as you know, there's never a shortage of recommendations or good ideas. I think that one of the reasons that, I know that one of the reasons the board didn't make a lot of recommendations this time is because virtually everything changed in the last cycle. So we would appreciate some time to actually see how that is going to work, but obviously, I'm sure even today, there'll be people coming forward. I've heard from a few folks with ideas that we can always look at.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brewer. And just to let you know, I have also used checks. I will continue to use checks. There's two of us. Yes, exactly. Switching gears a little bit, the build of your hearing today requires additional disclosure from entities regarding campaigns that's in support of a position to local ballot proposals. Does the board have a position on this pre-considered introduction?
Yeah, I believe we supported that. It seems like this is something that came up last session as well, right? Yes, I believe the board has supported that.
Just confirming you still support it.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
So that's great. So I am done with all my questions. I don't know if other council members have follow-up questions? Sure, why not? Sure.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it, since you're still here, and I am, and we both get paid to be here. I just want to go back to Councilman Wrestler's topic of the 75 contributions in the district. And just what I would reflect is that the 75 contributions is about one-sixth, not, is exactly one-sixth of the number of signatures required to gain ballot access for the two major parties in New York. And candidates obviously don't just rely on getting the 450, they get many, many more. So I don't think it's a heavy lift to get to 75. I do have a concern that in certain districts, you know, maybe Councilman Wrestler's, my district, other districts, may not be a heavy lift to ask somebody to write a check for $10, and then there are some districts where that's a big deal. So that makes sense, and I understand that. But I do think that 75 is not a heavy lift to ask if you're trying to get thousands and thousands of votes. And particularly, I would just want to note for the record that there was a time, not too recently, when the taxpayers were on the hook for only up to 55% of the spending limit, which worked out at that time to be about $100,000. And today, because of the greed of members of this body in the last session, the number is now upward, around probably 90% of the spending limit, 160, 170, I don't even know what it is. It's a huge amount of money, and if it's a primary, it's that, and then a general, it's double. And it's just a huge amount of money that we're asking taxpayers to shell out so that campaigns can send out glossy flyers to people. So I think asking to demonstrate that you have 75 people who are willing to be on the hook, who live in your district, I don't think that's a heavy lift. The expenditure limit, I just want to flag, because it was brought up by one of my colleagues, the chair, that, you know, the inflation obviously needs no explanation here in the council. I'm certainly not an expert on it, but everything costs more. And I'm not sure that the spending limit is moving as fast as things are costing. What I would also note is that, you know, the expenditure limit has always been fungible here with the CFP, not because candidates fudge it, but because the CFP funges it, always has. And for example, this session, this cycle, the out-year limit is for one year. In the last cycle, the out-year limit was for three years. In the next cycle, the '25 cycle, the out-year limit is again for one year. So, you know, that's just one example. I can also point to the examples of when the CFP changed without statutory authority, the spending that had been done prior to term limit changes, and then said, well, in order to compensate for that, we're going to put phantom numbers in people's filings representing a percentage of what we think you ought to have spent on, if you raised money, then that's how much you spent. So, you know, the spending limit has kind of been fungible. I think the CFP can try to help us out and figure out whether or not the spending limit is at the right place. And if it is, that's okay, but it may not be. I want to talk a little bit about, if you have time, Madam Chair, and this goes to Councilmember Brewer's questions regarding Venmo. I do not use Venmo. I still write checks, use credit cards and such, but Venmo's not my thing. I don't use Venmo, I don't know, I'm not so fancy. I don't go to that many Manhattan fundraisers with my Apple, I don't have Apple Pay either. But a number of years ago, this council, two sessions ago, changed the statute with regard to backup documentation. This was as a result of many back-and-forths that had occurred between the council and the Campaign Finance Board, and obviously, as a result of what many people felt were abnormally high rejections of matchable funds, matchable contributions. So for example, you know, just to state what the biggest issue is, typically, somebody makes a contribution by credit card, and the CFP system requires three checks, right? Check the first four digits, the first digits of your address, the zip code, and then the CVC code, the code that's on the back of the card. The council changed the statute and specified what it is that would be required for a credit card contribution to be matchable. The CFP never complied with that statute and has continued to insert requirements above and beyond the very specific, limited requirements that the statute sets forth that was done by this council in 2016. The reason I'm bringing that up is because Councilwoman Brewer reminded me by talking about Venmo. Venmo is a system which would not give you addresses and things like that, it's simply a transfer by bank account, and you don't really have more information. But it's not any more information than the CFP gets when it sees a physical check. When the CFP gets a check, all you see is what's on the check. In other words, if it's a name, that's all you see on the name, you get a signature, that's all you see. If there's an address printed, you get that too. But you don't get employment information, which NYC Votes Contributes asks for. You don't get a verification, a proof, an electronic transmittal that the address is as has been stated. In other words, it's a trust system. It's left to the candidates to fill in the blanks. So if a candidate receives a contribution by check, we then have to go solicit the employment information and get it entered. The idea that Venmo doesn't work, or Apple doesn't work, because we can't collect the employment information, I would say that that's probably not the best way to look at it, because then checks wouldn't work either. But I do want to go back to credit cards for a minute, because I think today is a little bit different than six years ago. We are very much in a transient society where people move around a lot, and people are using the same credit cards that were billed to when they were in their college dorm and may still be billed to their parents' address. People don't get printed bills, for the most part, at this point. Everything is done online. And I think asking the questions and requiring that there be a match, an electronic match for address and zip code, I think has outlived the time that it was maybe made more sense or more necessary. And I would encourage the CFP to go back to the statute and look at what it is that we intended, because as some of your staff who are in this room know, I know what it is that this council intended when it was done five years ago. And it was not that the CFP would continue trying to match the addresses and checks. That goes to the threshold question of threshold. The reason that it is so hard for candidates, I believe, like Councilmember Hanif and others, to make threshold is because it is so hard with the credit card contributions to get the matchability. And so for myself, for example, I don't like to solicit or accept cash contributions. I think in my last cycle, my campaign maybe took one or two, and this cycle, we've taken one. I just don't like to deal with cash. It's much harder to, you know, as a public official, you don't want to touch cash, and you don't want your campaign to either. But I think credit cards is really the way of the future. What I would also say, and there was a comment, I think, from your side about that you don't need NGP, I do want to point out that contributes and CSmart are both not fundraising tools. Their data, the data transmittal tools, the data record-keeping tools, they are, certainly, it's a contribution tool, but it's not a fundraising tool. It's not particularly, you can't solicit with it, really, you can't, you know, do events with it. It's not what NGP does. You know, I think it's gotten a little better over time. Your staff, by the way, Councilwoman Brewer's comments about your staff, repeated comments, are 100% true, they are wonderful. They work very, very hard to make sure that candidates, both the inexperienced, like Councilwoman Brewer and myself, and the very experienced, are able to parlay the system and move through it. But notwithstanding, I think there are things that you can do better, like some of the examples I gave before, to help candidates who are trying to honestly meet that threshold. So I would just urge you to go back to the statute. When it was done, there was a reason for it, it was very specific in language, and it was done, I mean, I can tell you sitting here, that it was done to get rid of the address check and the zip code check, specific for that reason. That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Yeager. And I also have to concur in your comments about the address check, that's different. There's disparity between an address check for what is a credit card, or what is frankly a check or cash donation. And as Councilmember Yeager says, that's just by verification, frankly, of the person writing that check versus the verification of a credit card. I also want to concur with Councilmember Yeager, that in terms of right now, I have come across this situation too, that many people are transient. Their home can be the one where they go to college, the one where their parents' homes are, and they are moving around. So these, I really do look forward to actually having a more in-depth conversation with CFP about all the issues that we have talked about today. And I do understand there needs to be more time, probably for, as you said, another election cycle, to see how the numbers and, you know, the data you receive from that next election cycle, to see how that pans out. I believe Councilmember Shulman has another question.
I came back. So I agree with my colleagues, and I also just want to thank Councilmember Ong for, Chair Ong, for holding this really important hearing. I want to thank you for being here. So a couple of things. One is the threshold. You know, I'm a big believer in where you stand depends on where you sit. So each district is different. I will tell you that in my district, even with my predecessor, who was in office for 12 years, that when, sometimes when you go to people and you say, oh, can you contribute? They say, well, I haven't even decided if I'm going to support you. So it's a little bit difficult. I think the threshold is fine the way, I'm just saying, I just want to make a comment about increasing it. You got to be aware that people, especially now with the cost of everything, and, you know, they say, well, I don't know anything about you, and after, it's a lift, it's a lift. And I've been very active in my community, as was my predecessor was, I mean, even as an incumbent, it took her quite a long time to get to that threshold. And to the comments of my colleagues, if you get a credit card from somebody who lives in your building, or lives across the street, or is your neighbor, but they have a credit card from another address, the process to correct that is extraordinarily difficult. And then you got to track people down, and then they got to sign something, and then it's, you know, and it's difficult. So I did want to mention that. The other thing I want to ask, and I don't, I could go through the, go to the CFP site, but is, in terms of exempt expenditures, is the stripe fees exempt currently? Do you know?
I don't know.
Do you know? Or not?
I'm happy to check.
All right, so--
I do not believe so.
Okay. I think that if we're doing credit cards and going through this process and everything else, the stripe fees should be exempt, because what you're doing is creating a situation where you have to, you have to leap, go above leaps and bounds to get somebody to do a check, get them to fill it out, and everything else, so that you don't have to do the stripe fee. I think that that's a fee that's imposed because we are using the credit card system so that information can be captured, and I would like for you really to take a look at that.
Okay, sure.
Thank you very much, I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you again for your testimony today. As you see, we all have, you know, many thoughts and concerns about CFP, but I really do appreciate the testimony today. I'm sure we'll be in touch in the future to discuss ways we can talk, you know, improve and go forward with the program. Thank you again.
Thank you, Chair. We'll now turn to public testimony. We'll be limiting public testimony today to three minutes per panelist. For in-person panelists, please come up to the table once your name has been called. For virtual panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant-at-arms will set the timer and give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your Our first panelist today will be Ben Weinberg. After that, we'll be moving to Zoom panelists, and we'll be hearing from Maria Pino.
Good morning, Councilmember, sorry. Good morning, Councilmembers and Chair Ong. My name is Ben Weinberg. I'm the Director of Public Policy at Citizens Union. Citizens Union is a good government group, working to advance voter participation, reduce the impact of big money, and opened the city's political system for 125 years. The speakers before me, and the ones that probably will come after me, will have spoken and will speak about the positive impact of the Campaign Finance Board, the Campaign Finance Program, impact on the competitiveness of election, diverse pool of candidates, and more. Our written testimony addresses these issues, but for the sake of time, I won't repeat what has already been said, I will echo what my colleagues will say, and the officials from the Campaign Finance Board have mentioned before. Our unique system of campaign finance has been a national model, as has been said, and that is much thanks to the ongoing reforms and continuing improvements implemented by-- and continuing improvements implemented by the city council. So I would like to use my time to address some of the improvements that we believe council members should consider as they prepare for next year's elections, especially concerning two issues brought to light during the 2021 cycle. One is independent expenditures, and the other is pay-to-play practices. So first on independent expenditures, we heard that IE spending increased significantly in the last decade, more than doubled than 2013. What we've seen really is that in the 2021 primary, every leading mayoral candidate had their own IE established to, basically, to support only them, their own quote-unquote "personal" IEs. The vast use of these candidate-specific IEs, and some of them were heavily funded by immediate family members, by former staff, allows candidates who are still participating in the program to basically circumvent spending limits and puts in the question, the whole question of coordination between campaigns and IEs. One way to prevent that is to, to better define the coordination in the city charter or by, by regulations with specific reference to family members and former staff, campaign staff as part of coordination. Another way to protect from IE spending is the legislation that is before the council today, the committee today. We support the bill, and we submitted a memo of support. We do propose a small drafting change that is mentioned in the memo. Another way to protect from high IE spending, especially in council districts, is to provide a certain relief for high, for candidates who face high-spending IEs that are running negative campaigns against them. This was a major issue in some council races last year. We saw hundreds of thousands of dollars spent on not a lot of council district, but very targeted, sorry, very targeted amount of council races. This is a relief that is already being provided for council members who face opponents who are not participating in the matching funds program and could also be done smartly and effectively for candidates who face high-spending, negative IE campaigns. Chair, may I continue for just a short time? Thank you. The other major issue that we've seen in the 2021 election and might require the council's attention is pay-to-play issues. I'll just mention two specific loopholes that we think still exist in the city's laws related to pay-to-play issues. One is the question of lobbyists being able to bundle donations. As we know, lobbyists and people on the Doing Business with the city database are substantially limited in how much money they can donate, and their donations are not matched. But a loophole allows them to bypass those limits by bundling donations from other people. And what we've seen last year, we found at least 15 individuals on the Doing Business database that have acted as lobbyists. Just to give you one example, a president of a company that has contracts with the city whose donation limit is set as $400 was able to bundle $47,500 for one mayoral candidate. That's over 100 times more. And bundlers raised one and a half million dollars last year. So the fix here is rather easy in that is to ban bundling by lobbyists and people who do business with the city. Sorry. One other issue is the practice of buying campaign consulting services from firms that also lobby. That came about last year. It received renewed, renewed public attention last year's election after several leading mayoral candidates basically entrusted their campaigns to powerful lobbying firms. We've seen that in media reports and in other areas. And we have some glaring examples in my testimony. We believe that the city should prohibit the use of public funds to purchase campaign services from firms that also lobby the city. There may be limits to what we, the law can do to regulate in terms of hiring these firms, but we don't think taxpayers' dollars should be used to pay for companies that, sorry, for campaign consultants that might have business before. The city then can use the access they receive during the campaign to get access to the council, the elected official's office. The last recommendation is about affiliated nonprofits. I won't go into that here, but that is in my testimony. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony.
We'll now turn to Zoom panelists. Our first Zoom panelist will be Maria Pino. Maria Pino, you may begin upon the sergeant's announcement.
Time has begun.
Thank you. Good morning, councilmembers and Chair Ang. My name is Marina Pino, and I am counsel in the Elections and Government Program at the Brennan Center for Justice. We are a nonpartisan public policy institute that works to make democracy more accessible and representative nationwide. Thank you for this opportunity to testify remotely today. For more than 30 years, New York City's public financing program has served as a necessary counterweight to the power of wealth to influence our government. The 2021 election showed once again that this program is a viable tool for running campaigns powered by everyday New Yorkers and serves as a nationwide model for reform. As the CFP noted earlier in this hearing, the program saw record-breaking participation last year with almost 94% of primary candidates and 81% of general candidates participating in the program. The program also helped the city elect the most demographically representative council in history, with women representing 61% and people of color representing 67% of the council. New York City's system also fosters stronger ties between candidates and their communities. This important benefit is especially important at a time when mega donors across the country are using their private wealth more than ever before to shape our politics. To this end, the city saw the highest rate of small-dollar individual contributions over the last three cycles. And the Brennan Center's research has shown that public financing deepens ties between candidates and the communities that they serve. Additionally, the program has served as a powerful model for reform, as has been mentioned throughout this hearing, including the recent launch of New York State's groundbreaking statewide public financing program. The city's program paved the way for New York to have the strongest statewide program in the nation, one with the promise to empower more New Yorkers and meaningfully bring their voices into our politics. And as for the presented introduction, the Brennan Center applauds the city council for considering legislation to increase transparency in municipal ballot campaign spending. Our research at Brennan Center has documented how secret spending in elections is arguably at its most damaging at the state and local levels. The Brennan Center therefore supports common sense legislation to require individuals and entities sending, spending significant amounts to influence ballot measures to disclose their funding sources. The proposed amendments can provide city residents with more complete information when voting on policy questions that affect their daily lives. And the bill sensibly brings to light dark money spending that can have a distorting effect in ballot contests while still capturing only the largest spenders seeking to sway voters. To strengthen this bill further, we suggest minor improvements to clarify the scope of the bill's application[1753.42]